The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
It is 6 o'clock. I will call the February 2nd, 20 seconds of 2022 meeting to order. Joe, if you will, or I'm sorry, Rafina, will you relieve some pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to God and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have two public comments this evening. The first is general public comment. I'll call that in a moment. After the hearing, D1 will have a separate public comment for the public hearing. So first, I will ask if there are any members of the public who would like to make a public comment, please state your name, address, and try and keep your comments to five minutes. And if we have any in the room here, now would be the time to come to the podium. Seeing none, do we have anyone online?
No one online.
No one online with public comment. Okay, no public comment today. We will go to item D1, public hearing.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. Sorry, sir.
Waring.
This is the legal notice Town of Farmington Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 22, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the Town Manager's Proposed Seven-Year Capital Improvement Plan dated at Farmington, Connecticut, the 7th day of February 2022. Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
Thank you. Kathy?
Sorry, Joe. Always a bridesmaid.
Good evening. Tonight I am presenting the 2223-2829 Capital Improvement Program. The Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, is a planning document by which the Town of Farmington plans for the improvements it will undertake over the next seven years. For a project to qualify as a capital improvement, the cost of the item or project should be at least $25,000 and the improvement should have a useful life of at least five years. Equipment and projects which cost less than $25,000 or which have a useful life of less than five years do not qualify as a capital improvement and should be included as an expense in the operating budget. Although a capital improvement may have a recurring or ongoing operating expense related to its purchase or construction, that expense is not included in the CIP but is included in the operating budget. Projects in the CIP may be funded from a variety of sources: appropriation, bonding, state and, I'm sorry, projects in the CIP may be funded from a variety of sources: appropriations, bonding, a state or federal grant, or other sources of funds. And I think my PowerPoint is off, so let me just fix this. Okay, we thought we changed that. Okay.
There you go.
There it goes. Okay. Kathy, can you watch that? Because I don't know if Anna had each one of the things. I thought we had changed that, but okay. Highlights of the Town of Farmington's capital improvement policy are as follows: The Town will strive to maintain a high reliance on pay-as-you-go financing for its capital improvements. The Town's objective will be to contribute at least 2.5% of the operating budget's annual general fund revenues to the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan calls for the expenditure of $74,425,205 over the next seven years. Of this amount, $50,708,000 is the proposed to be funded through appropriations from the general fund. Bonding authorizations totaling $23,420,000 are also proposed and $242,205 proposed from other funds. The Town's capital improvement policy and the Town Strategic Plan were the policy guidelines that were at the forefront when formulating the CIP while focusing the appropriations into two main funding themes. These themes are equipment, infrastructure, maintenance improvements, and technology and communication initiatives. Equipment, infrastructure, maintenance, improvement summary: Each year in the capital budget, we strive to make steady progress in this area. There is a continuous need to maintain the Town's equipment and infrastructure, and these needs touch all departments. Each department has equipment replacement plans. This critical equipment keeps our volunteer firefighters safe when responding for calls for service. It allows our roads to be properly maintained by the highway and ground staff. It also keeps our school grounds, parks, and golf courses looking clean and ready to play during the warm weather months. Equipment replacement ensures the Town's ability to offer high-quality services to our residents and businesses. This year, we continue to focus much of our capital funding in this area. For example, the capital improvement plan proposes to fund equipment purchases such as the replacement of turnout gear for the fire department, a highway maintenance truck, ServPro for the public works department, the utility vehicles for the police department, and Westwoods Golf Course. These purchases fund equipment that are used every day. They respond to calls for service to our residents and maintain the rails to trails, fields, and town roads. The proposed capital improvement plan continues to fund renovations and our improvements to town-owned buildings and properties. Funding for the upcoming year is proposed to continue funding renovations at the youth center and continue with improvements at the Tinty Barn. Additionally, security upgrades are funded at the fire station, senior center, Staples House, police, and the police department. Funds are also included for the potential 1928 Building Committee. Several large unanticipated repairs have been seen in the last few years, and the CIP attempts to have funds available for unanticipated repairs. Technology and communication summary: In the 21st century, a town's technology infrastructure must be maintained. It must keep up with the rapidly changing world of technology as well as the expectations of residents and businesses. Townwide technology improvements, as well as the improvements specific to the police department, fire department, and the town hall are proposed in this capital improvement plan. Technology is consistently evolving, and the proposed capital plan will continue to provide routine technology improvements to the town hall and other town facilities, allowing all departments to deliver public goods and services effectively and efficiently. Funds are included for the police department to purchase license plate readers, a networked switch replacement and technology to update the security at the police department, including camera replacements and electronic locks. The fire department has funds allocated to continue the implementation of a multi-phase communication replacement plan to replace and/or purchase mobile and portable radios at each of the stations. These funds will allow for the server infrastructure replacement, a joint project with the BOA, a partial phone system upgrade at the police department and senior center, an IT security audit, and banking funds for the rewiring of town hall to be completed after the high school project is complete. I will now review the budget in detail. For 2022, 2023, I am not proposing any bonding Other appropriations include $128,205 in grant funds for the state of Connecticut for an outdoor pavilion at the town hall, $55,000 for a dial-a-ride bus, and $59,000 for recreation facility improvements. I will now summarize the department requests for the first year of the capital improvement plan. Board of Education. The full Board of Education submission is included with the capital plan and will be presented next. This is in line with the financial forecast that we've been working with to fund school capital needs. It should be noted that the Board of Education proposed capital, in the proposed capital budget, included funding for two large ventilation projects in the school this year and an additional two ventilation projects the following year. I am recommending all four of these projects be bonded together next year. Engineering. I'm recommending $75,000 in the engineering department, which includes environmental code compliance and open space management. Highway and grounds. I'm recommending $500,000 in the highway and grounds department that includes irrigation improvements, vehicle maintenance, vehicle maintenance, building roof, and various equipment replacements. In the planning department, I'm recommending $60,000 in the planning department. Funds will be used to implement the objectives of the Town of Farmington's affordable housing plan and repairs to Tinty Barn. In the fire department, I'm recommending $311,000, which will be used for the replacement of turnout gear, a multi-phase communication upgrade, a multi-phase equipment replacement plan, and a keyless building entry system. In the police department, I'm recommending $330,000. This includes funds for a new utility vehicle, technology improvements, multi-phase communication upgrade, and a dispatch council replacement. In the Town Manager's Office, I'm recommending $601,000. This includes startup funds for the potential 1928 Building Committee, town hall improvements, building and equipment improvements, technology improvements, revaluation cost, and the Unionville Museum. In the community and recreation services, I'm recommending $75,000 for building security, senior center exercise equipment, and a multi-phase renovation at the youth center. At the Westwoods Golf Course, I'm recommending $42,000 for the replacement of utility vehicle for Westwoods Golf Course. In summary, the capital budget will allow us to make headway to meet the Town's capital improvement needs. The cost of maintaining the Town's infrastructure through the CIP is a necessary expense that must be recognized. The need for funds to maintain the Town's property, buildings, and equipment is often greater than the willingness of the Town to appropriate funds to meet those needs. However, the cost of not maintaining the Town's property, buildings, and equipment will have a significant long-term impact. It may be tempting to defer a cost today to save money. However, the cost of deferred maintenance and repairs does not disappear. It accumulates and will likely increase in the future. There are several capital projects in the seven-year plan that were pushed to the out years due to their large cost. These projects may be good candidates for the ARPA funding. The proposed first year of the cash appropriation is $3,881,000, with the Town's portion at $1,994,000 and the Board of Education portion at $1,887,000. This recommended cash appropriation is above what we have historically been funding for capital projects. Since 2005, through the Town's capital improvement policy, our capital plan strives to contribute at least 2.5% of the annual general fund revenues allocated to the operating budget. With a cash appropriation of $3,881,000, this proposed capital budget is at 3.2% of the general fund revenues allocated to the operating budget. A capital budget of 2.5% would be $3,42,877. The Town Council will have to decide on a total funding level when you review the entire budget in March. I look forward to working with the Town Council as we review my proposed capital improvement plan. This seven-year plan reflects the needs of the Town. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I now call on Alicia.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to present to you the 2022-2023 Board of Education's Capital Improvement Budget. I'm Alicia Bowman, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. All right. Guided by our philosophy, the development of the capital budget priorities is a collaborative and strategic planning opportunity for the school district administration and the Board of Education. The FPS K-8 Facilities Review informs our short- and long-term facility goals that we continue to prioritize in the budget process. Then, as a central office team, we assess the recommendations from our school leaders, the comprehensive facility review, and up-to-date safety and security guidance to develop our capital budget proposal for 2022, 2023, and beyond. And that is what we're sharing with you tonight. This is a list of some of the projects completed over the past year, including unanticipated expenses due to COVID-19 pertaining to DPH and Connecticut State Department of Education We will walk you through the 10 buckets of our capital improvement requests. As in the past, we use a system of organizing our proposal into buckets to align with the Town's approach. The first bucket is technology. The total amount requested in the Board of Education's technology capital improvement for 2022-23 is $510,000. And this is a little under, but in line with our seven-year projected capital plan. This slide illustrates the various technology investment buckets in which we are proposing capital improvement dollars. Additional funding has been added to the network equipment line that will be applied in a phased approach for the FHS building project. Current state reimbursements are just below 20%, whereas federal E-rate reimbursement reimbursement is at 40%. The next bucket is security. The Board of Education is requesting $164,000. This area provides funding for the continued phasing and upgrading of security measures within the district according to the Farmington Police Department's recommendations and the K-8 Facilities Review Report recommendations. A significant amount of this request is for the planned systematic replacement of components of the security system which are reaching or have reached their life expectancy. The next bucket is code and safety compliance. The Board of Education is requesting $158,500 to maintain compliance with FIRE, life safety, and ADA codes. Each of the code and safety projects listed here were recommendations of the K-8 Facilities Review Report. The next bucket is cafeteria equipment. This request of $111,500 continues the systematic replacement of cafeteria equipment to avoid mounting repair costs by strategically purchasing the items on the bulleted list. The next bucket is what we call FFNE. Our furniture request is $185,000. This is a continuation of our district's replacement cycle to a more modern, collaborative, and flexible style, and we plan to complete the purchase of classroom furniture at Irving A. Robbins. The next bucket is MEP, District-Wide Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing. Our MEP request is $118,000. This request includes the continued phased replacement of rooftop mechanical equipment at IAR, as well as the Westwoods walk-in freezer equipment pictured to the right. The most significant mechanical upgrades requested have been separated from this account as their own request, described in the following slides. The Board of Education is requesting $850,000 per school for Union and Noah Wallace mechanical ventilation upgrades. Following the work done last year to commission and optimize our existing mechanical equipment throughout the district, we asked the engineering firm to provide recommendations to further improve our mechanical ventilation. Their suggestion was to add dedicated outdoor air in the four elementary school buildings. This year's request includes Union School and Noah Wallace, and next year's request includes West District and East Farms. To narrow down the scope and the cost of these projects, we asked the engineering firm to provide us a schematic design and budgetary magnitude for a project at Noah Wallace School described on this slide. And this is a photo of the design, and it shows how it will take three units to service the classroom areas. The next bucket is structural/architectural. $515,000 is requested for structural and architectural projects, which are listed here. With this allocation, we would begin repairs to the brick and mortar at Noah Wallace School, repair failing expansion joints at Irving A. Robbins, and paint and refinish the Westwoods Gymnasium floor. Our telephone system request is $25,000. This bucket is a banking bucket for an expected phone system upgrade in 2025. A replacement of vehicles request is $100,000. This request would replace the failing district handicapped accessible van. Next, we have some examples of our capital projects for the out years. The K-8 Facility Review Report continues to guide our out-year capital projects. Some examples of those projects for the future include replacement of vehicles, the telephone system upgrade, mechanical system replacements at Westwoods, which is reaching a milestone age of 20 years. In total, the capital request for fiscal year 2022, 2023 is $3,587,000. Thank you for your consideration, my colleagues Kathy Greeter, Superintendent, Matt Ross, Director of Technology, and Sam Kilpatrick, Director of Facilities, and I look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Alicia. At this point, I will go to the public. We will open this up for public comment. So if there are any members of the public here in chambers that would like to ask any questions, please, you can step up to the podium, state your name and address, and try and keep your comments to five minutes. Seeing none, we will move to our online participants. Kathy?
I do not see any hands raised.
Seeing no hands raised. Okay. We will then move on to item E1. Joseph?
This time.
This time.
E1, I'd like to make a motion to consider the fiscal year 2022, 2023 to 2028 to 2029 seven-year capital improvement plan.
Second? I have a motion to second. Kathy?
So I just wanted to discuss the process tonight and see if we're going to be doing it the same way. Is that Kathy Greeter and her staff are here, and they would be going through the capital, which they just did, in more detail. After that, we'd break for dinner, and then my department heads would start coming in, and we'd go through the entire capital budget on the town side. Historically, we have not made any changes to the capital budget on the board's side or the town's side. The purpose originally for this meeting was to go through it in detail so that in a couple of weeks, when we do the overall budget, we had a, you know, we've already gone through the capital. So usually, just listen to everyone ask questions, and then we review the capital as part of the entire budget in March.
Okay. Does everybody understand? So we will now have the opportunity to ask questions of the Board of Education on their capital budget. Thank you all for joining us. Who would like to start the questioning? Joseph?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out today and for your, all your work you do constantly and getting this much prepared. Quick question. I know we talked about it last year, about the ventilation systems, ARPA money. Is the government opening up money in order to improve our air handling systems? Is that still on that project, or are we just looking to do it no matter what because the money's not equalling out?
Do you want to talk about how we use the money for the commission?
So as far as the federal dollars, we're going to supplement the design cost. We didn't receive enough money to be able to do the actual physical work with those dollars, but we will be supplementing the design costs with Esser money. There's also the potential over the next couple of years that the state would be starting to reimburse on HVAC projects. It's within the governor's plan that he's putting forward, so there's potential that that would be reimbursable from the state as well. So that helps that we have it broken out as a separate project. If that happens, then we'll be ready to do that.
Okay. So obviously, it'll fall within the governor's timeline also. If we deal with this year, next year, and they open it up three years from now, we can get the reimbursement back?
Yes.
Usually.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Can I ask a question about the ventilation? So the ventilation projects, was that mostly spurred by concerns due to the pandemic, or was that stuff that was in the works prior to that as well?
So the K-8 Facilities Review does mention a lot of the HVAC issues that we do have. It does mention throughout the district that moving towards air conditioning throughout all the buildings is a plan there. But this specific project was brought about because we said we've had somebody through all our systems. Let's get some recommendations about how to further improve our air quality throughout the district, and this was the recommendation. The project would support, although it isn't air conditioning, it would support any initiative to add air conditioning to the buildings in the future.
That was going to be my other question. So you had said that it will do something to condition outdoor air, but it won't provide like an air, an actual air condition. So without getting too in the weeds, like if it's incredibly a warm day outside, it's a 90-degree day, would it, would this system be able to bring in air that was going to be more comfortable than just cracking a window in a classroom?
It would be designed to bring in 78-degree air on the hottest days.
Okay.
So it wouldn't, wouldn't be air conditioning at 67-degree air supply.
Oh, I got you.
It would be, it would help in that situation.
Thank you.
So it'll still be warmer than my house in the summer?
[laughing]
Okay, next.
Rafina.
Going back to the air conditioning. So all three of my kids went through East Farms, and I know a number of, have had children go through the elementary schools. And as you know, on a hot day, if it's 95 degrees outside, even if you crack open the window, it's 95 degrees inside as well. So back to the point of 78-degree, we're talking about all the classrooms, right? Because some of the inner classrooms would remain cooler, generally speaking, and then the, I think the media center at East Farms, and I'm sure at other schools also have air conditioning.
Yes.
So this would be, the entire school would be able to be cooled, right?
Classrooms.
Classes.
Yeah.
So not the hallways, we're just talking individual classrooms?
This, the aim of this is to bring, yes, air, preconditioned air into classroom spaces.
But not the hallway, so it'd still be 98 degrees in the hallway?
Well, the way air would work, it would mix with the rest of it, but this is, again, this is strictly around bringing fresh air into the classrooms in particular.
Okay.
So, and conditioning it for humidity, which also helps on those hot days, and then also tempering the air so you're supplying 78-degree air. And if we do move to air conditioning, you could use the same duct work that you have to be able to do that, and also bringing out humidity helps with, anytime you're bringing air conditioning into an older building as well.
So can we talk about the process for potentially getting to the air conditioning? Because there have been some really hot days the last couple of years. We had like a couple of heat-related, I don't know too many here last year, but in years prior where it was just, you know, 98 degrees, so the kids had a half-day. So what's the, if we were able to get the duct work in and, you know, I know we're only starting with two schools, then East Farms and I forget which ones, all four should be done in how long for the preconditioned air?
Two projects a year would probably be a good goal to have on that. So it would be two projects, not this summer, but the following summer, and then two projects the summer after that.
Okay, so that's 2025?
Mm-hmm.
For all four schools. Any chance we could get like them maybe a year earlier and be done by 2024?
So I think it's going to take a year of planning and reviewing to be able to get ready to do those projects. Anytime if there is reimbursement, you're also extending that timeline to go to the state. It takes a long time to go through that process as well. And I think we're looking at this as being bonded next year as well. So to start that project, we can certainly start the design project now, but as far as the actual construction, that would, the earliest would be next summer.
Okay. So once we have the, not, I don't want to say forced cool air, but you know, the preconditioned air, then what are the steps to eventually getting air conditioning into the lower elementary schools? Is there a plan in place, or?
Any design process that we go through here will mention that we need to, we need to design it so that it's ready to integrate into that future project, add air conditioning in those buildings.
Okay. And just for everyone here and for me also, just remind me, we can't do air conditioning in the lower elementary schools just because the electric load, that's what I heard prior, would not support air conditioning. Is that correct?
So there may be elementaries that where that would be an issue. There may be, that may need electrical upgrades for these projects as well, but that would be integrated within this project.
Okay.
I think what you might be remembering is having window air conditioners in every, you know, in every classroom, which would have overburdened the electrical system. I think that's what you might be remembering when we talked about this in the past. So it wasn't bringing air conditioning as a, you know, system, and it was more about adding window units to every single adding window units to every single classroom in a school, which would have been really challenging and not really energy efficient to go that way.
Okay. So this is really just central air like you would have in a house, but outside for the school building? Is that how you'd think of it? Like, if, you know, like, if you have central air in your home, you don't have an individual air conditioning units in all the windows?
Right.
It's just separate? So what we're, the way I'd conceptualize it would be central air outside of the build, outside of these school buildings?
So, so what it is, is it's a, it's a rooftop unit. Two of them would be within the attics at Noah Wallace, but same, same idea, rooftop unit, and you're exhausting air out, and you're bringing air in, and whatever the thermal difference is, you're taking the energy out of the air that you're supplying to either cool it, or in the winter months, you're, you're taking the energy out to warm the air that you're bringing in. That's the basic concept of it. And then there would be additional coils to cool it on those hottest days or to warm it on the coldest of the days as well.
Okay.
And overall, increase fresh air supply to all classrooms.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Ed?
Yep. First of all, thanks for your presentation and for coming to speak with us today. My question is on page eight with the security, the different security projects you have. I'm wondering, does that apply to all the schools? And if so, is there, do you have, like, a priority list in terms of, you know, what areas or what schools you're going to address first with these projects?
It applies to all the schools except for the high school, given that we're, we're looking at the new high school. We may add a couple of card swipes on the existing building, depending on the security assessment report and the time, timeframe, but right now, we are looking at the K eight schools. We've already identified some additional points of access that we want to add, badge readers. We've also gone through and identified other locations for cameras as well.
Great. And is there, is there any sort of priority list in terms of which schools you're going to work on first with these projects, or is it going to be simultaneous?
Simultaneous. I mean, a lot of these are onesie-twosies at individual schools, so it would be simultaneous.
Thank you.
Just to add on, we are hitting the 10-year anniversary of our security review, so we also are proposing a new security review that would encompass all schools, so we just want to, you know, after 10 years, it's time to look at all of our schools again.
Do you think things might have changed over time?
No.
Other questions? Let's get through one round first. Johnny?
No questions.
All right. Rafina, you're up.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So, one other thing, sorry. All of my ideas or questions are because I've had kids and I go to the school, so just bear with me. So I noticed that there was $50,000 allocated for, I think, 2023, 2024, for fields and playground equipment. So does that include, like, the nets for the tennis court?
That might not.
That's not you?
It might not be us, it might be the parks and rec.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll ask.
They, they can't, they maintain, you know, and upgrade our playgrounds.
Okay, so all the playground, for example, like, at IAR, we have a nice, or used to be a nice tennis courts with the nets, so those, that's there at?
The town.
Okay. I'll save my question then.
Other questions from Board of Ed? Keith?
I had a, just a general one. I had just a question on difference between, so the $75,000 for classroom desktop, those desktop computers, I assume? And then?
Or is it for teacher desktops?
Which page?
Classroom desktop upgrades.
Yes.
Desktop, desktop computers.
Desktop computers, okay.
Yes.
And then $150,000 for classroom audiovisual upgrades. Is that smart board?
In general terms, yes, interactive flat panels. So we're now coming around on our, after six years of doing upgrades in the basic schools, we're coming back around, and I'm looking at upgrading existing projector and smart boards in classrooms with interactive flat panels, which have a 10-year lifespan versus the projectors that we had been purchasing, which had a much shorter lifespan, plus we were paying for lamps on an annual basis. So this is part of our capital plan. Every five, six, seven years, we circle back around and perform these upgrades based on the improvement in technology.
So I'm new, and maybe I should already know this, but every classroom in front, we all have smart boards in every classroom or something?
Every classroom in, I'm trying to think if there's one, there might be, like, one exception, but yes, every classroom has one.
So hold you to it?
Yeah. The, the standard classroom setup is some sort of display technology.
Sure.
Historically, it's been a projector and a smart board, or projector and screen. We've now made that transition to either lampless projectors, or in this case, the better technology now is interactive flat panels.
A smarter board.
Yes.
We'll get to the smartest boards.
And it's just going to improve after that, so. Any other questions for the Board of Ed? All right, thank you. It sounds like a very good comprehensive program. We will be discussing, obviously, as we get through the rest of the budget and see where it all fits in, but I think most of what you have in here looks, we've seen it in past years and moving forward, so that's very good. So I thank you for your time, and I think you're free to go tonight.
Thank you all.
Stay dry out there. You're going to catch him off guard, aren't you?
I know. Kathy and Cat? Now, as we just heard moments ago, the plan was to take a break after the Board of Education. We'll see where Kathy and Cat come to join us again. Or we could just take a break right now. Thank you, them. Ready for a break, Kathy? Or do we need to delay?
Ready for dinner.
Okay. We will now adjourn for half hour for a dinner. It is 7:04. We are returning to session. And we are in item E one right now. Kathy, I think we just finished the Board of Ed.
Yep. And we have Chief Paul Malanson, who's going to do police and fire, so if he and Joe can come up, and on your space there is this document right here. I think that would be the document to work off of.
Great.
And it would be page?
C five.
C five. And we're working off of column two, right?
The, the column that says requested 2022, 2023.
Great.
And that's where we're working.
Okay.
All right. So we'll start with Paul. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Okay, so, oops, hold on. Okay. So the police department has one, two, three, four items, and I'll just briefly go through them, and then if you have any questions for the chief. First is a utility vehicle, and this will be for a new utility vehicle to be used with the community service officers on the rails to trails and for police officers during public events. Again, as you know, we have discussed it before, that our rails to trails have always been very busy, but they've just become extraordinarily busy during COVID. We have bought a couple of electric bikes for the police officers to be able to go up and down on the trails, and this would be another vehicle to help to be able to go on the trails and do various things. The next item is $160,000 for technology improvements. Funds will be used to purchase license plate readers, replace the network switch, and make security improvements, including video camera replacement and electronic door locks. As with all town-wide, technology is a big item in all our budgets, and police department is especially that we just are constantly changing, upgrading, and we are funding technology. $75,000 is the communication upgrade, and this will be funds to use to improve radio coverage by adding the West Farms mall site, and Paul can talk a little bit more about that. And then $60,000 is for our dispatch, for a console, and if you, some of you remember, is that this is a program to replace the console stations, and this is, I think this is the, is this the last year of it?
Yes.
The last year of the console stations.
Three-year program? Was it three years total?
Yeah, we were putting money in to try and replace it.
Yeah. I think this is the third year.
Yes.
So that's our four items for the police department, so I don't know if you have any questions?
Sure. We'll start from there. Questions? Brian?
I do have a question. You said that with the money, the $60,000 is, that we've been kind of banking to replace them all, correct?
Yes.
So has the cost gone up, have, over the course of the last year? Have we covered everything that you need?
So, yes, we will. Actually, we were lucky enough that Rick Tardif, at the time, had projected the prices going up in the three-year, so he had put a cushion in there for us so that we would be accurate in the number. So right now, we're still on, unless something drastically happens in this next year before we actually do a PO for it, we should be okay.
Perfect, thanks.
Other questions? Rafina?
I'm curious, the license plate reader, hello?
Hi.
Um, the license plate reader, are you going to be using those to kind of get people to slow down in town? Like, what's the purpose?
So the license plate readers, that was a program we started many years ago when DMV got rid of the little stickers on people's license plates. And so what happens is, as you go by, it reads to figure out whether your car is registered or not. And so that, that is the one way. We used to be able to tell by the?
Sticker.
Sticker on the license plate. Now there's no way to tell if somebody's car is registered. So really, what it helps with is, and DMV has had some significant issues with their registration system, because now they send you the registration, and then we've had issues where people just haven't sent their money in, or their money, they, the notices didn't go out, and they didn't know. Those types of situations, normally, we won't tick it, we'll just tell people, and they're astonished that their registration's out. What it also does, though, which is a more significant issue, is the insurance. So now DMV is connected to everybody's insurance company, so that if you switch insurance or you lose insurance, it automatically goes to DMV, and it'll suspend your registration, and that will pop up on the license plate reader. So that obviously is more significant. If you're the victim of an accident where somebody hits you and they don't have insurance, that can be very frustrating. So the license plate readers work in that way to do registrations mostly. It also has stolen cars, so it'll go off when somebody in a stolen car drives by.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? Joe?
Chief, to go off, I don't see it on the list, cameras, storage, all that jazz. Obviously, you're wearing your cameras, so we paid up for the five years, we're looking at a bill coming up next year, because we don't know what we're going to be looking at?
No. So the, between last year and this year, the pricing structure changed for cameras. So this council last year had put all the money in to pay for basically our implementation plus a five-year program. So you front-loaded the money to pay for it, and when we finally were in a position to purchase it, so between the time we got the quote, and it was approved, and we were ready to purchase it, they no longer offered that sort of payment plan. So now it's a five-year payment plan, so just like with the consoles, the money's in that reserve, and we will pay for it every year for the five years, and that money is covered. And if you remember, we are submitting for reimbursement, that 30% reimbursement for the cameras.
That's good, so they're still holding true to that?
Yes.
Right.
And the storage, is that, is that part of this, or is that in the operating budget? We talked about that, I remember.
No, it's a part of this, yes. Yeah. So we do not have our, so we are basically cloud storage, because then we don't have to deal with issues of backup, we don't have to deal with issues of memory, how much, and that sort of thing. So it's all a part of that plan.
All right. And the vehicle? Down towards the, towards the river trails, or we sticking straight mainly to paved areas?
No, that's exactly. Obviously, as you know, Tunxus Mead was, was heavily populated, especially with some of the beaches closing and that sort of thing. So this will allow our CSOs and our officers who work there to be able to go through those trails and do Tunxus Mead, but then also go on the rails to trails and do some of the other areas, river road access and that sort of thing.
Great. Anything else?
Other questions? So it's basically a gator-type vehicle, four-wheel drive, smaller vehicle that can get on and off the trail and hit the beaches and all the other spots.
Exactly. And if there's a broken-down bicycle or somebody who got injured, we would be able to transport them out of there, which happens frequently. So we, we've had really phenomenal response from the community on having our CSOs out there, and just, you know, whether it be a, somebody with a family and has a broken-down bike, and they're two miles away from their car, and we assist them, somebody who falls off the bike and gets injured, and we're there with a Band-Aid, somebody who has a flat tire, those sorts of things. So it's really been, really, I would say that other communities are calling to, to model after ours, because it's been so successful.
How many years have we've done it now? Like, four or five?
I want to say this will be our fifth year.
For the CSO?
For the CSO.
Yeah. That'd be more than that.
Yeah.
We're running the CSOs before I retired.
On the trails like that?
Maybe six years? It all blends in with it. It has been, I mean, but it's been.
Six years without me, I think. Seems like yesterday.
Okay. Any other questions?
Anything we're missing off that you guys are looking?
No, no. This, for the, you know, for the capital budget, I think we've covered all the things that we've needed to cover to, you know, we've obviously talked about, you know, things and planned for things years out, like we always do, but for this year, it was a, it was a solid budget.
Great.
Fire, we got to run?
All right. The next item is the fire department, and Cat, you'll give them what page that's on?
Yep, that is on page C four.
C four. Okay. So the fire department, five, six, hold on, seven. Yeah. So the fire department has one, two, three, four items. I'll briefly go through those four items, and then the chief here could give you any detail. The first one is our turnout gear for $66,000, and that's, the funds will continue to the replacement plan for the turnout gear, and as you know, this is a program that we established many, many years ago, but to keep all our equipment up properly, we put it in the budget, and we rotate all the equipment out. So it's a program that we've done for many, many years. Communication upgrades, these were funds to continue the implementation of a multi-phase communication replacement plan to replace in our purchased mobile radios and portable radios, and this is something that the fire department has worked on, and it's a multi-year plan, and they've also been coordinating with the police department on it. So it's a joint kind of, to make sure our communications. My favorite word, Cat, $75,000 for?
Extrication.
Equipment, and this will be to begin a program of replacing old combustion power hydraulic tools with battery-powered tools. And it's a replacement that, so that all our fire departments, East Farms, Farmington, and Tunxus, have the same type of equipment, and they can, so it's helping with training, that one can be replaced with another one, and this is a couple of years in the making that we have to start replacing, and that it's all going to be the same model, the same equipment, and so I think they have a, a committee that's been studying this, and this is the start of this program. And then the last item is keyless building entry, and this will be funds to upgrade the current building access and to provide key fobs in the fire stations. And again, if you remember, we've just done it here in the town hall. Security town-wide is a, an issue that we're addressing. We had a security study done, and in our fire departments, just like here in the town hall, keys have been given out over years and years and years, and we don't know who's in the building, who's out of the building, and it's really, we need to be monitoring that better, and just on that end, and just also for security of our employees and the people that are in the building. So we've done phase one, which is the town hall, and we're going to talk about, the police department is doing some upgrades, and then also the fire department, which I just mentioned, and then when Nancy Parent comes in, we're going to be talking about the social services. So it's a, a multi-year program. So I don't know if you have any specific questions for the chief?
Questions regarding fire?
I just want to know what turnout gear is.
So that's the, the helmet, the coat, the boots, the gloves, so everything, that's why they call it turnout gear, it's the equipment they wear to the fire. So one of the issues that they're having right now is that their current vendor is no longer selling the gear that they use. So now we're going to, as we phase it in, we're going to be phasing in, and they've developed a, a new committee to look at the gear, but it's the things that the firemen But it's the things that the firemen wear on themselves. So they're each assigned because of fitting purposes, right? The, the boots and the coats and the gloves and the helmets and those sorts of things. The, the one thing that is pretty exciting and, and obviously, as you know, it's only been about two months since I've been involved with the fire department. And the consistency now, before it used to be three separate departments buying three separate types of extrication equipment and that sort of thing. There's been a huge move and many of you may have heard the word Hearst Tools, they're, but they were basically hydraulic operated to cut metal and to, to open pry open cars and that sort of thing. Now it's all battery-operated, but the, the exciting part is that all three fire companies are all going to buy the same equipment where they never had this before. So if you went from one fire company to another or something broke or like, we didn't have, so now the training, everything's going to be consistent and the fire chiefs are doing a phenomenal job, working together, putting committees together that involve everybody to make sure that we get that consistent equipment throughout the town. So that if a fireman from Tunksis Hoes was helping at a scene and there was a Farmington fire truck there, he'd be familiar with all of that equipment that's on that truck. So it's really, they're doing some great work on that. So that's why it's great that they're, they're finishing up getting this equipment.
Chief, what are they, what's the, the plan on the communications now?
So what this is, is this is just for the radios themselves. So mobile radios are the ones that are in the actual fire trucks. So they're mobile radios. The portables are the ones that you have that they, you know, that they have on their belts and those sorts of things. So right now, the problem that you run in communications is that about every eight years, your equipment's obsolete. So it's kind of planned obsolescence with, you know, portable radios and that sort of thing. So they're phasing in the new ones now because you can't buy equipment to repair them. And obviously, you know, the batteries and the equipment in them. So that's what, that's what they're doing in there with this.
Joe?
Just to go on with the communications, how did everything work out? Because I know for years, we've been having trouble, police department, fire department, communicating with outside towns and I'm sure with the Forest Hills fire last week. And are we, are we clearing up those bugs where Farmington talked to Plainville, Avon?
Yes, everything actually is working really well. So, and you're, you're funding a little bit this year, but we've made some huge improvements over the last several years. And last year, we added police and fire. Basically, what used to happen on these towers is they would receive a signal from the police department and then push the signal out. But when you were out in the field talking to the police department, it wouldn't go to the tower and then to the police department. It had to try and make it all the way to the police department. So that was adding equipment to make sure that that was a two-way communication, that each one of those towers worked both ways, not just one way in delivering communication. So that's really been the plan of what we've been doing. We've added equipment. We did New Britain, if you remember Stanley Park and that sort of thing. We did that a couple of years ago, so that's really helped at the mall in that area of town.
Yeah. And one thing, Joey, you probably remember in what we've done and you see it with some of the other towns, but with the police and somewhat with the fire too, with the communications, our approach has been, and the council has, supported technology and communication, both in the fire and in the police budget, is that we have done good, good amount of money each year and we continually upgrade the system as we go along. And so instead of now, we're 10 years down and we have to do a bonding issue of $3 million to upgrade the systems. Our approach hasn't been that way. Our approach is to take each section and do it on a year-to-year basis. And I think that's worked out really pretty well. And also, our equipment is, always seems like it's in date. It's not, you wait 10 years and then you have to do a big project or six years, whatever the number is. So I think we were advised early on to do that and I think it was, it has worked out really quite well for us.
No, I, I agree. I just remember our issues were, we had a certain type of system, but New Britain had a different system or West Hartford had a different system. So it always made it hard for us to coincide, like we're all operating on the same page.
Right.
So there, there still are different systems depending on what band you're on. But we purchased and, and through the last couple of years, if you remember, our supervisors all have now radios that can communicate directly. They're dual-band, so they're not just Farmington. They're a little bit more expensive, but we are able to get then West Hartford, Plainville, we're able to get additional police departments on ours so that we don't have to go through a call center. We can go directly to the incident commanders on the scene.
Thank you, chief.
Other questions?
And just, you know, to follow up on what both you, Paul and Kathy were saying, it's, we have been talking about this for a long time, getting the communication so it's just more efficient. The last thing you want when we're in the middle of any emergency response is inefficiency. So that's been great. The, the turnout gear is something we tend to keep up with on a regular basis. So we don't have, as Kathy was just saying, that one big item that we have to pay for at one time and we keep after it. So we make sure everything is current, so we're ready when the emergency strikes. So no other questions, I think. Paul, appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
Busy two months, too.
All right, so next we have Russ Arnold and I think he's here. And that would be, we'll start at the beginning for him, right?
He is on page, we start with engineering on C2.
And where's my verbiage? Yeah, why don't you just go with one of these so he can move on the right documents? All right, so C2, engineering. Everyone knows Russ Arnold, our director of Public Works and our town engineer. So we have, on the engineer, we have three, two items. One is $50,000 for environmental code compliance and funds will be used to continue our mandated town-wide catch basin, catch basin clearing program as well as stormwater sampling and other required permit tasks. So we do consult out some of that work and we put the money in the budget for that. And then the next item is open space management, $25,000 and that funds will be used for the open, town's open space program. And some of you who have been on the council know that we've continually tried to fund this and we usually cut it out. One of the things that we would like to see is that if we could keep that in and what these funds would be used, it would be at Tunksis, Tunksis Mead. And as you know, as part of our planning is that we're really trying to upgrade Tunksis Mead a little bit and they have a lot of invasive species and a lot of different things. And so we thought where that money would be used is along the trails and the river and to try to get, get control of some of the open space, I'm not open space, the invasive species. But we do buy a lot of open space and we don't put a lot of money into, we, it's passive recreation, but there is still tree cutting and invasive species and we have water on some of them. So I, I really think it's something that we probably should think about funding on a more regular basis, but for the immediate need, this would be at the park at Tunksis Mead. So that's where that would be. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on Russ on engineering?
On these two items, any questions?
I would just say, as you mentioned, Kathy, you know, every year, we do talk about putting this money in and generally, it's one of the early things to be caught and cut. One of the problems with ignoring it is at some point, you're going to have big issues that come up and you're going to have to do it. Just like we were talking with keeping up with things with the police and fire, same concept, if we keep up with it and we've got a smaller number that's manageable every year, we don't have that big item that comes in one year and kind of gets us. Brian?
Just a quick question.
Yep.
You know, I've been reading a lot about invasive species and I imagine at Farmington because it's just so, so wild that there's a lot of it going on here. Russ, we talked about just doing Tunksis Mead, but do you have any idea what it would cost to be a little more town-wide than just Tunksis Mead? Would address any invasive species issues?
Do you want me to answer honestly or should I lie to you?
Well, let's go with the honest one.
No, it could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, as Kathy said, we do the tree program alone, like what people don't realize is in the subdivisions, they're required to give open space. There's a person here that understands that firsthand, but those pockets of open space have trees on them. And when those trees come down or something falls, it falls on the private property out of the open space, that becomes, it's our tree because it's, you know, it's given to the town. That's a very expensive tree. And what we've been doing is going in as part of the subdivision, we go through and ask the developer to cut down all the dead trees as much as we can see near the property line, excuse me, so that we don't end up with that expense to take it over. But to get a tree crew in there in between houses, that's very expensive and cumbersome. Not to mention just the trees like at, with the invasive species and bittersweet all over the place. Those are the vines you see growing everywhere.
Right.
So to go through and eradicate the, you know, that bittersweet with hundreds of thousands of dollars. So this is really just to get started over the, the immediate need around the fields. And the outer years are for basically to start getting some of those bigger trees down through all the open space. We have hundreds of acres of open space.
No, I appreciate you looking at that because I have read it is an issue that's only going to keep growing, so to speak.
Yeah, no, it's not stopping.
That's not a joke.
No, no, exactly, exactly. It's, it's a, it's a serious issue. It's killing a lot of trees.
Yeah.
And we have some, we've done a, a couple of studies on some of our open space, like our reservoir property and some other ones. And we did do some work at the reservoir property and did do that, but we really, I think, have to start making a conscious effort to put more money in the budget and start funding, funding it. But I think for now, this to get started on this and definitely on Tunksis Mead and our fields and down by the riverfront and some of that would be, would be a good place, I think. Any other questions on Russ on the engineering?
Highway and grounds?
Highway and grounds is C3. In highway and grounds, we have a, a few items. The first one is $40,000 for irrigation improvements and this will be funds to continue the upgrade of irrigation systems at the school and athletic fields. I A R Middle School is slated for this funding. And as you can see in the out years, this is something that we do on a regular basis where we're replacing our irrigation systems. $75,000 for vehicle maintenance building roof. And this is for a roof, funds will be used to replace the roof over the vehicle maintenance section of the highway garage. This is the oldest section of the highway and grounds facility and the roof is original to the building. $85,000 is a road maintenance truck in the highway. And this is funds that will be used to replace an existing 2001 road maintenance truck in the highway department. This is our trucks that they use on a daily basis. $225,000 for excavator. Funds will be used to purchase the excavator. This is a new piece of equipment for the highway and grounds department and it would replace a backhoe, so we'd no longer be purchasing a backhoe. We'd be replacing this type of equipment. Russ and Jim Rusbase, our highway superintendent, feel that this is a, a, a piece of equipment that would be more multi-use and we'd get a more use out of it. $30,000 is a sand pro and funds will be used to replace a 1998 sand pro to be used in the parks department. And Russ can tell you when I'm done what a sand pro is. And $45,000 for a vehicle maintenance vehicle. And this is, will be to replace an existing 2004 van in the building maintenance department. So Russ, maybe you could explain what that sand pro is because I can't even remember right now what it is.
Sure, the sand pro is what we use to prep all our baseball fields. So in little league fields and high school fields, the Tunksis Mead up at the high school had prepped the baseball and softball fields. And the current one that we have, I believe, is a 1994. So, and that's been rebuilt a couple of times. The Farmington Amateur Athletic Club gave us theirs when they finished. So we took their parts and put it onto ours and we have a, we kept it going and kept it going, but it's really come, we can't get parts anymore. And it's really, and its useful life is over, so.
And one of the things you may notice is that we did not fund a snowplow, one of our biggest pieces of equipment. We have been doing really quite well of doing one almost every year. But with this new piece of equipment, we decided that we could probably go one year without getting one of the snow plows. So that's why we've switched that out. So, but the, and the bigger pieces of equipment, you know, there's a lot of equipment, but I feel we're doing a, a pretty good job of replacing our equipment. And, you know, again, there's a lot in the out years, but we are making good strides to make sure that we have good equipment and it is more efficient. And, you know, some, we, like you said, our equipment, some of our equipment is, you know, 20 years old.
And 30 years old with the sand problem.
Yeah, and 30 years old.
Trust me, we have older stuff than that and just keep rebuilding.
But we've learned though, like even just with the snowplow trucks and everything, they become, obviously, they become more efficient, but they become efficient in different ways. And you know, some of the people that have been on the council, if you remember our snowplow, that they, how the salt comes out, there's ways that it, you don't have to have the salt come out automatically and you, it can, so again, replacing equipment is, it's, it's just more efficient in general.
No questions on the highway and grounds?
Just one, a quick question. So by not doing a new snowplow this year, we would still have the same number of plows on the street, we're just not retiring one
Correct.
This year, essentially?
Exactly.
Okay, great.
Other questions for Harvey's?
Russ, do you handle the playgrounds at I A R and like the courts, specifically the tennis court? A couple of parents asked me about that. So, you know, we have some nice tennis courts with nets up. There's been a random, I don't even know how long it's been there. It's like a basketball hoop that's just kind of laying there. Was the basketball hoop supposed to go up or?
No, no, that, there shouldn't be.
Okay.
Is it like a portable?
Hmm, no, not so much, just been kind of sitting there.
Is it like knocked over?
Yeah, and it's
Really?
Yeah, I don't, it was there a couple of months ago, the last, the last time, you know, I tried to play tennis.
Okay.
But I'm just curious.
I'll take a look.
Okay, and then they're like, like, you know, the, the doors don't close all the way.
Oh, they're like the gates?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a look, that's not a problem.
Okay, I was, I wasn't sure, like, and then, you know, some of the equipment is, you know, it's just kind of used, but there are a lot of families that go and use the, for just recreation, the tennis courts, not only at I A R but also at Farmington High School. So I'm just, that's your, under your jurisdiction? Okay.
Yes, yes, we'll take a look. Are you saying, are the, the nets aren't up right now, are they?
No.
Not at I A R.
Yeah, no, because we take them down in the fall for the winter and we don't put them back up till like, in, middle into March, whenever the spring season starts for the high schools when we put them back up.
Well, it's strange because, you know, you, you might get a nice, like this weekend, or not this weekend, but a couple of days ago, it was like 50 degrees and then it turned down to 20 and then we had the snow, so you just can never tell.
Yeah, no, exactly, so.
I did notice some creative people took the benches and put them where the nets would be, probably for just that reason.
That wasn't me. More my kids.
We'll check the cameras.
No accusations, that's it.
No, we'll just check the cameras, it's fine.
There you go.
No, just kidding.
Thank you.
Keith?
Kathy, can you, do you know, what was, what were we spending on average for the snowplow? You said usually we're doing some kind of maintenance per year on
I'm sorry.
For snowplows, you said normally we do put some money aside for plows?
Yep.
We're not doing that this year. What's the average spend on a plow per year?
I, I think it's about $200,000.
Yeah, and it's, it's slowly creeping up, Keith. It's a, the cost and we've talked, talking with our, you know, different vendors and stuff.
Sure.
They're putting numbers and they're like, if you better, if, tell us you're buying or give us a P O. because we can't guarantee the price.
Yeah, but by keeping the snowplow maintenance out this year, it creates some room that we don't usually have, correct?
Right, well, that's why we flipped it with the other one because that, that vehicle is 200, what it was.
225.
225, so, and usually, I think last year, our snowplow was 188, but it wouldn't be 188 this year. I think it was closer to 200, right?
Right, we're at 2, we put 250 because we didn't know what the number would be.
Yeah, I'm sure everything's more expensive
Yeah.
Now than we thought last year, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What, what is the average lifespan of the, of the plow trucks? When you turn them over, how many do we have?
We've got 15, 16 plow trucks for 13, 15 plow trucks, you know, the six-wheelers for 13 routes. And our oldest plow truck now is like a ninety-eight. So we keep them a long time.
You do a lot of neutralizing of the salts afterwards, then?
We do. We give them, we put like, we spray on like a paraffin to coat the whole body and the truck itself. And then we continually wash them after every storm. And stainless helps, but it just eventually eats it away. But we continually maintain them, and that's, you know, we recognize that two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. And we know that, you know, as taxpayers, we don't want those, you know, we can't just buy one every, buy ten every year. So we do take care of them. We are replacing a lot of equipment on them, the chains on them for the salting and stuff. Everything gets really well maintained.
Yeah, I, just looking at it from my point of view, and we tend to turn them over quicker than that.
Yeah.
Because of fail, failures during the actual use and the need of them is worse than, and then you get to a point where the maintenance outweighs the cost of buying a new one.
Right, and that, we were there, Johnny, about six years ago, five, maybe seven years ago, where we were kind of, every other year. And then it just, we caught, it got, we got, you know, trucks, some of them just die, and then we're done. And it's not going to be a fun phone call when I have to call my boss and tell her we couldn't plow a couple of streets. So that's not going to happen.
And that's why we keep two of them as spares.
Yeah.
And so we have the spares just in case.
And we do get a lot of breakdowns during a storm, and we have two mechanics that are on, if we're doing a full calling, they come in just in case we have a breakdown. We switch them, switch trucks out, and we're constantly repairing them.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right. Which is a question on the excavator that we're replacing that?
No, this is a new item.
Oh, brand new.
Yeah, this, this excavator is with our paving program that we do every year, that we do the bond for, the two million dollars every other year. But we're paving every year. We've been borrowing Town of Avon's mini excavator, and that is on tracks. This excavator, we've done a lot of research and talked to about eight different towns who have bought them. This is on wheels, and it comes with like six different attachments. And besides just an excavator bucket, and being on wheels, but it's narrow enough where we don't have to take a full lane. It can still, can go up and over, just like the small mini one, but the lifting power is really what we need. And so you still don't, without taking a lane, you're not disrupting the traffic and people, you know, residents can get by as we're prepping, doing our catch basin replacement and repairs. But the one, one of the good things that we, that we recommend, you know, our recommendation to get is the attachment that's a grapple. So when we have these storms that come up, we don't have to wait for some, you know, another, use a, for a backhoe and stuff. This will actually grab the tree, move it, you know, it's big pinchers and claws that'll take the tree and pick it up for us. Thus speeding up our responses to the trees that come down during the storms.
Could have used that last year.
Absolutely, absolutely. But that's, it's not just for, you know, summertime. This is going to be, you know, you know, nine months, ten months out of the year, depending on when the storm come.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I just have one comment.
Good.
Obviously, listening to Johnny's remarks about their turnover of vehicles, so, you know, thank you to you and your crew for making these vehicles. Probably going, you know, double to what normal companies are doing with them. So you're really saving everybody a ton of money over the years by just the maintenance you're putting into them.
Yeah, no, it pays it for itself. And like I say, we've had a lot of turnover and over the years and employees at the highway. And it's the, we preach the same mantra, treat it like it's your own and you're taking it home with you. And, you know, I, I wouldn't be able to sit here and say to you, oh, we want to buy ten, you know, ten dump trucks this year because, well, we didn't really maintain them. I, you know, that's not what we're here for. So that's really what we do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions here? Kathy, could you say that the excavator could be used as an extra cater?
Exactly.
With the grappling hook, it will be.
There you go.
The next item is C four. That would be the planning department. And we have two items in the planning department. That would be thirty thousand dollars Affordable Housing Plan. Funds will be used to implement the goals and the objectives of the Town of Farmington Affordable Housing Plan, which was approved by the Town Planning Commission in July of twenty twenty-one. And thirty thousand dollars for Tinty Farm Improvements. Funds will be used for the improvements at Tinty Barn, and Tinty Barn is on Route ten at the Tinty Farm. And that barn we do own, and we've been doing, we did, I think it's two phases already, and this is the third phase, to upgrade and keep that barn moving. So that would be for the barn. And I think, Kat, you had just what we would be doing for the affordable housing for the thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so the, like Kathy said, the Affordable Housing Plan was passed by TPZ in twenty twenty-one. And this is a plan that must be updated every five years per state statute. These funds would allow the planning department to work with a consultant to explore some of those objectives and strategies that were in the plan, including accessory dwelling units, inclusionary zoning approaches for multifamily housing developments, and zoning requirements for parking for multifamily housing.
So that's what we have in the planning department.
Okay, very nice. Questions for the planning department? Seeing none. I guess we're moving on from there.
And then the next one is Westwoods, right?
Westwoods.
Westwoods, and that is on?
C six.
C six. And this is for a utility vehicle, and funds will be used to purchase a utility vehicle with a blower. And I had a typo. This will replace a broken truckster and also replace a two thousand and three giant vac blower. And so this is at Westwoods Golf Course, and this is a replacement vehicle. And my understanding is this replacement vehicle could be like thirty or forty years old.
It's near nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety, I think.
Nineteen ninety, so that one, that one's ready for replacement at the golf course.
This, the green Cushman that they use for working out on the course?
Yeah, submit that to Smithsonian or something.
God, exactly.
So those are Russ's items.
Okay, questions on these? No questions here.
Well, wait. For their replacement piece, what we have in the past, when we get that new one, are we able to maybe sell the existing one? Or maybe not for much, but.
Yeah, it's more or less going to be, I think, a donation at this point. We can't get, you can't get parts for it anymore.
Okay.
But we are selling most of our equipment that we sell. Yeah, but this one, this one, I don't think so, right?
Joe does a great job.
I'm glad that you do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Joe does a great job with our auction and getting money for stuff. This one maybe, we may get more money for scrap, scrap metal.
How about eBay? Right. Just as you know, I mentioned at the presentation that we're not, I'm not recommending any bonding. And for the roads, we still have another season, and so that would be for our road bond for next year. And while you, everyone's here, Russ, I think we just recently talked about what we're looking at into the spring and summer. What roads may be, just again, as I always say, that this is where we are at this point of time, but things could change. But what you're looking to do for the spring and summer?
Yeah, so our first round will be at, on Town Farm Road from Route four to the Avon Town Line. That'll be where the C I P or V I P paving program, the bid is next, I think it's this tomorrow, actually, right? Joe, is it this week, the bid? So we'll know who our vendor is for pavement, and we've already talked with Tilcon because they were a vendor last year. We want to get Town Farm Road done early, like in May. From there, we'll go over to Wolf Pit, Wolf Pit Road from Route six all the way to Elizabeth. We'll do Elizabeth and Irene. And then from there, that'll be hopefully in June. Then we'll go to multiple streets in Farmington Center. We're going to do Church, Hart, and Carrington, Tungusis, Hotchkiss, and Markey. And then next year, so what we do is, we've been working well with the different, with the water company and the gas company. So for their extensions, we work with them. We let them go first, and then we come in and pay. We don't want to pave a new road and have them come dig it up. So we're, a couple of the roads are going to be, like Hotchkiss, we worked with the water company. They put in a new water main last year because they, I think they had like a three-inch water main that serviced that road, cast iron. So they replaced all that. So that's what, reason why we're doing that. And you try and put the roads together so that they're in a common area. You know, you don't want to pave Montieth and then go pave, you know, Robin Road. You know, it's just, it's not economical. So that's why we do bunches in different areas.
I was actually going to ask about Robin.
Okay.
Yeah, just a, just a comment. I'm glad to hear Town Farm Road is kind of high on your priority list. I think a few weeks ago, I was driving down there and there's some pretty nasty potholes. And I think recently I went through and you guys did some, some patchwork to at least alleviate it in the, in the short term. But I'm glad to see that's.
Yeah, we're, we're patching. And a part of the problem is over the years, the shoulders get built up with, you know, sand, debris, whatever. And the water can't get off, and it pockets and ponds, and so it'll, problem is, we'll need more police so we can cut the speeders down when we're done. But that, but that's what we're out there patching all the time, so.
Rovina?
So you mentioned Robin Road. I have a couple of very vocal residents that live on that street. Is that planned at some point to get paved?
At some point, yes. We're waiting to hear from the water company because as they just, as you know, they just did the water main installation on Batterson.
Yeah.
They've run a stub off to Berkshire. They're going to be canvassing Berkshire, Robin, and Berkshire and Robin to see if they want a water extension. So we would wait, Public Water.
So instead of getting the New Britain Water, you mean?
It would be New Britain Water, right?
It's still New Britain Water?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's their service area. So we're going to wait for them. We'll continue to monitor. It's, we know it needs it, but I don't want to go in and pave and have them dig up the road the year after and put water in.
Okay.
If it, if that happens. So we're waiting for them to do their canvas.
Because Robin Road is on.
They're on a well right now, Russ?
Yeah, they're on wells. And that's, yeah, okay. Just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
All right. I'll let them know you said so. Next year. Fingers crossed.
Next year?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't say next year.
Oh, I thought, I heard that. No?
No, no, no. I said it's on our list.
Heard the year after the water company puts.
Right, the year after the water company does their canvas.
Bury my luck, bury my luck.
Other questions on the roads? I would just like to say it seems like it's just simple and common sense, what you're saying here, Russ, to wait for all the other utilities to be done. But having traveled through many of our neighboring towns where they no sooner finish paving a road than somebody rips it up and puts something underneath it, I appreciate the work you do to make sure we don't have that happen on our roads endlessly. So, thank you.
So that is all for, for Russ, if there's any other questions?
Any parting questions for Russ?
No.
Nice jacket.
All right.
That was the seventy-fifth anniversary of the N B A jacket, I think.
Something special has to be going on. He's wearing a jacket. If he finds you, that's not going to worry.
Does it give me any more money?
Yeah.
I'll give you more money to wear a tie?
My tie had a stain on it, I'll be honest.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
And next up, we have Nancy.
All right, everyone knows Nancy Perrin, our director. And we are on page?
C six.
C six. And we have? Five items. Okay. Why does my thing only have three items? Oh, because we have some Os in here.
That's what it is.
That's what it is, okay.
I was like, uh-oh.
We like them.
We have some Os. So the first item, we'll go through the general fund, is that we have twenty-five thousand dollars for building safety. And these funds will be used to upgrade the current building access to provide key fobs at the senior center at the Staples House. So this is something I mentioned earlier. Another item is twenty-five thousand dollars for senior center exercise equipment. This is, funds will be used to replace the flooring in the senior center exercise room. And Nancy, I'm sure has mentioned in the past that our seniors love the exercise room. It's a really popular program, and we're replacing the floor. And I think last year we replaced some of the equipment for it, but.
We did, yeah. Yeah, the flooring will help with the balance programs because we don't have a spongy floor right now.
And then another item is twenty-five thousand for youth center renovations. And this will be funds to, will be used to continue renovations at the youth center in Unionville in accordance with the, the plan that we have. And then we also have for others, a dial-a-ride bus, and that would be fifty-five thousand dollars for a new bus. And the other O is recreation facility improvements. And what this is, is that part of our recreation policy is that a portion of the recreation funds that we generate from different programs are, depending on how much revenue we receive, a portion of that is then put back into the general fund for operations for the highway department. So if we need new fences or need different things, the highway department spends that money. This is a new item being shown in the budget, but it's not a new item of what we've done. But what has happened is that it was some, it wasn't clear about how much money the highway department could use for some of these little maintenance items. So what we've done is that it's based on a formula, and so that formula, so this year, the formula allows fifty-nine thousand dollars. And so it would be for generally for the highway maintenance to do things on the facilities. So that's what that money is. So I don't know if you have any questions for Nancy?
The dial-a-ride bus, is that replacing an old bus or a new, we're just buying a new one or?
That will be for a minivan, a, a new minivan that's a little bit different than the wheelchair lift buses that we have.
So it's an addition to the?
Yep, yep, and it is a potential donation.
Okay, great.
And that's something that, again, between COVID and some other things, that the regular larger bus has been taking people. But then we've learned, and it's a great service, is that because of COVID, we didn't want as many people on the buses. And so our dial-a-ride drivers have been driving either some of the town vehicles to take smaller groups or an individual group. But it's come to realize that that's kind of even more efficient, and that it can go on these little mini trips and have just small groups of people, and it can take them to very specific items, so, and it's by a donation too.
And it's, and it's a waste to have a huge van go all the way to Hartford with a wheelchair lift when you have someone that may not be in a wheelchair, you know, to be able to have a little bit more diverse vehicles to use what you need at the time makes sense.
Okay.
Other questions? Seeing none. Always like those Os.
I do too.
Donations are greatly appreciated. I know you do. And appreciate you keeping up with all these things. Senior Center does get great use, and that's, I think, critical. We keep them happy and healthy there.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay. And the last item we have is in the town manager's account. This is my account. And see what we have?
On page C five.
Way too many pieces of paper. All right, so the first item is a hundred thousand dollars, and this is, funds would be used for a potential nineteen twenty-eight design for the nineteen twenty-eight building. And so if that project moves along, we're going to need money, funds for architectural designs and things of that nature. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for town hall improvements. Funds in this account will be banked and used to implement a multi-phase plan to improve the security of town hall and used to address interior improvements and building code issues. So we're basically finishing up with the security, and then we'll be using it to address some interior items and also banking money. We do have some bathroom things that we'd like to do and some upgrading and things of that nature. Building equipment improvements, fifty thousand dollars. This is a banking account where we'd like to bank money and what has been happening. And again, even though we have done a very good job, I think, of replacing equipment and buildings on different things. Unfortunately, some of our equipment and our, is, and our vehicles, they're very expensive. And so when things break down, it's a very large item to replace. And it really does, it wrecks havoc on our budgets because we have to take like, you know, a bit large fire truck. You could have a fifteen thousand dollar repair on something like that, or a snowplow and things like that. So what we've done in the past, and it's worked out very well, is that we bank money in this account. And then if we have a large expenditure that happens, we take the money out of that account. And then we, we draw down until it's done. And so we bank it if we don't use it unless we really need to. What has happened in many years is that when we haven't had that, and when budgets have been very, very tight, we have to shut down accounts. So if like your highway and grounds has a significant issue on a piece of equipment, and we don't have the money to pay for it, we shut down accounts to do it. And so it really, then we don't get to do other things. So this is, I think, a good way to just bank some money, so for these large repairs that happen. Unionville Museum, this is the Unionville Museum. This is funds for the town's portion of a joint project with the Unionville Museum for the addition of, for the construction of the bathroom and kitchenette. If some of you may be aware that they've been doing a large fundraising effort too, and that they're about ready to go for their museum to put a bathroom in and also a kitchenette. A hundred and thirty thousand dollars for technology improvements. Funds will be used for technology upgrades, including server infrastructure replacement, an I T security audit, phone system upgrade at the police department and senior center, and banking funds for the rewiring at town hall to be completed after the high school construction project is complete. And lastly, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for revale, and funds will be used for the process of reappraising all real property. So next year, you know, we're going into our revale. So we've, I think we put money in last year a little bit, and now we have to put a good hunk in this year. So that is. So that is our town manager's account. So I don't know if you have any specific questions or comments?
Questions on those items? Rafina?
Kathy, I was just wondering for the technology category, are there any of the ARPA funds available to be used for that?
Yes, uh, the ARPA funds could be basically used for any of these accounts, but yes.
Okay, so, but we're not building that into the budget because we don't have it in hand?
The, the committee's been working on what they want to use the ARPA funds for. So I don't know if one of the committee members, CJ, or the committee members, want to kind of give an update on where we stand on the ARPA funds?
Uh, yeah, what we've been talking about in the committee, and we'll bring this to the full council for, uh, approval or review, uh, is looking at bigger ticket items and, and larger capital items to use that for rather than a lot of smaller things. But that seemed to be where we were leaning in the, uh, in that committee. So we'll, uh, at our, which meeting do we present that?
At the March meeting.
March meeting, March meeting, we'll present our recommendations and then we'll have discussions about that, where best to put that. So well before we're done with the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Brian?
Just because I'm, I'm not sure, but could you, um, just share the difference between the town hall improvements and the building equipment improvements?
Yep.
Just curious.
Yeah, sure. So Kat, why don't you talk about what are some of the things on the town hall improvements?
Yep, like Kathy mentioned, we're finishing up the security project that was kind of the majority of, of items that were funded last year. Um, and we have some interior building repairs code issues that are slated. Um, we have restroom renovations, interior ceilings that need some repair, interior lighting. We're looking to move to LED lights throughout all of the offices, um, which is, is a pretty substantial repair. So that, there could be banking funds to, to do that project all at once. Um, and then some interior code issues, ADA accessibility, uh, sprinkler system, area of refuse and, and some means of egress issues that we, we have slated.
So those are the town hall improvements?
That's, it, yes, for just town hall.
Okay.
And then the building equipment repairs, that's for town wide. And that's if, that's really for unexpected expenses that come. So if at the senior center, something breaks down, the air conditioning system breaks down, we don't have that budgeted in the senior center. And so if that's like a $4,000 or $5,000 expenditure that we didn't plan on and it wasn't budgeted for. If we, in our fire department, our ladder truck has something that significantly happens and it's not budgeted for. We have general maintenance items, but we really don't fund for items like large expenditures. And we, what we have been doing is this, and that's been working out for us. Because if we don't do this, really, we should be in each of the operating budgets, putting more money in because you're going to have unexpected types of things that happen. But this system seems to be working out well. And we, we only use it when we need it and then we bank money. And so we, like, for years, we, we're banking it and then we didn't have to use it, come back again for four or five years. And now we're back where we've used all the money out of the account. So we're looking to build it back up again.
Okay, no, it just helps to know one is town hall and the rest is the rest of the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and, you know, some of the other, like, um, but it's mostly in the operating budget. Like the senior center has funds for maintenance of senior center. Town hall improvements is just larger expenditures. And so the fire department's in their operating budget, they have some expenditures too. Or we have the security, that's individual for that. This is really unexpected expenses.
No, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? When did we draw that down? Uh, you said we used all the funds from the building. How did we do on last year? Did we take much out of that?
Uh, Joe?
Go along. We ran, we ran it for several years, put about 75,000 about five years ago. And we kept replenishing it with, um, different things that came along. And our different sources of funds that came along, we actually ran out last year. Council gave us 50,000 and that 50,000 is gone, um, this year already. You know, one thing you have to remember, your newest building is over 20 years old. And so a lot of your buildings are, you know, mostly mechanical failures, um, age-backed failures. Give you an example, this building, uh, the show along has, has a, has a leak in it, it's a $4,000 repair. So that would come out of here. Uh, the waste oil burn, which they keep, keep on arriving with, um, we couldn't repair it this year. We had to replace it, that was a $6,000 repair. So there's, there's items like that that are coming up. I just got one today, the Southwest Firehouse has a leak. And so we're going to fix the, just the leak itself, it's $2,000. But actually looking at the pictures of the roof, we'll probably have to replace the roof at some point in the near future. So there's, there's just those items. And, uh, like I said, we're pretty much out of money right now for this year. Except 50,000 for next year, you know, we'll, we'll be starting from zero again.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
I would just say a comment that I, I kind of like the fact that it's centralized in the town manager's office and, you know, and we're not spreading out, you know, ju, uh, you know, just maybe and because funds all over these different departments and operating budget. So I kind of like the fact that it's centralized, it's monitored, we know exactly where the money's going and when. Uh, and, you know, frankly, they hold the purse strings.
Yep, agreed. Any other questions on those items?
So we hit everything and maybe I could do a little bit of a wrap-up, kind of some different where we're at. So two things, um, so this is, uh, $3,881,000 for coming out of cash. So that is, um, 3.2%. Our policy is 2.5%. Um, if we were going to go down to a two, uh, 2.5, it would be cutting approximately $800,000 out of the budget. We, um, we did a history, um, of what percentage we were at over the last two year, uh, 10 years, and it was 2.7%. Um, so we have been bumping it up, which we should be, I think. Um, I would suggest that we look at this number in comparison to the entire budget, see if there's any, if you feel that there's, you need to make, um, additional cuts to it. But I think this is a really pretty solid capital, uh, project. And if we could afford to keep most of it on both the school side and the town size, I think it would be really, uh, beneficial to us. But again, just so you know, to get to back to where we were, um, a 2.5% of it would be about an $800,000 cut. And as you look through these items, there's really not a lot that are big-ticket items that you would have to cut out to get to that. So I think getting to that will be, would be pretty difficult to do. Um, but obviously we could, I could make a list of the priorities. And then on the school side, it's all the school projects too. Um, the other thing I wanted to just mention, and I know you guys were asking about it, is that, uh, about no bonding this year. Uh, we're not doing the, the roads until next year. And between Joe and I, we talked a little bit with the school system and they seemed amenable to moving the two air handlers that were, uh, slotted for this year, which would have been cash, but we would have not, we would have recommended bonding, but they don't usually do that, we do that. Um, and then put it, the, uh, two for next year. And the reason why we're not doing it this year is just that between the supply chain and the work that's out there, we really feel that it's almost the same amount of time by the time it's actually done. Because by the time everything's ordered and they get things, so if we just wait and just bond all four of them, um, at next year. And that would still keep up with our policy of, uh, bonding for the Board of Education. So that's our logic on that. Um, so that was, so there's no bonding. And then other than that, everything else was in the Board of Education budget as presented. The last item was what Rafina had talked a little bit about, is that, um, some of the ARPA funds that if the council has decided that, um, we would use some of the ARPA funds for the capital, but potentially not for the large, large-scale projects. Some of my recommendations would be to look at is big-ticket one-time items because we don't want to put a hole in the budget. But the rails to trails and the engineering department, the rails and trails are like the roads now, they're over 20 years old. Uh, to start paving them and putting $100,000, $200,000 a year to do that is probably not the best approach. Another potential problem would be school parking lots and paving. Um, we have a bunch of schools that their parking lots need to be paved. Um, it's something that whether or not we want to use maybe some ARPA funds to do the parking lots. Or potentially when we start bonding for the roads to add either a second bond if we have to, to do parking lots for the schools. Because these are big-ticket items and we need to do them. Um, tungstous mead improvements, we did a large study on tungstous mead. And I think it was approximately five or $6 million worth of work that needs to be done down there. That would be another potential item that I would say could be for the ARPA funds that are on the out years. And the last item is the Stone House, that's down by, um, Westwood's Golf Course. As you see, there was nothing in this year for the Stone Houses because we still have money in the budget. We haven't spent, they're still working on the money that was, um, in the budget. But we do have work that needs to be done in that building. So that was another idea. And again, it could be a combination or anything else that was in the capital. But I think that the committee has said that we really don't want to pick something that would put a hole in our budget for the following year. So kind of a big-ticket item. And obviously we have bigger ticket items in the capital plan. For instance, our fire, uh, fire station building committee, which is, I think, a 10.
Eleven.
A million-dollar project. Or potentially maybe a 1928 building, if you wanted to use money for that, which is again, a larger project. So those are, just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you. And, uh, just, uh, for the public and for other people, when we're talking about the hole in the budget, um, if you're using this money, any of the ARPA money for something that's an ongoing, if we're using it for the turnout gear, things like that, uh, that's a cost we don't have. So next year, that's an addition to our budget, that's increasing the budget by that amount because you didn't pay for, through your regular budget means, which is also the reason we talked about with the ARPA, you don't use that for your operating expenses. And that's in essence what you'd be doing if you put it in your capital for some of your ongoing capital expenses. So just to clarify that. Uh, questions on Kathy's comments?
So.
Now, before you go on, one, one thing I, uh, uh, we were talking about that a little bit, but as you were talking about the, the average of our capital.
Yeah.
Uh, and our cash capital each year. As I recall, that 2.5 was not the target, this is what we should hit, that was the minimum target that we should be spending. So when we're talking about a 2.5 target, that means we didn't expect that we should be, uh, expending less than 2.5% of our budget on capital improvements just to keep up. So although this 3.2 is point seven above that, it's not out of line with what the policy was.
Correct, correct. And, and again, I've, I didn't remember this because it was during COVID and I've seemed to have forgotten everything during COVID. But, you know, two years ago, I think it was two years ago, we significantly reduced the capital budget.
Yeah.
And so we made up some ground last year. And again, it may be appropriate to make up some more ground, uh, this year. And then, you know, um, but we have, our average is about 2.7%.
That's a very good point because when we had no tax increase that year, uh, we had no tax increase in a large, uh, part because we cut a lot of the capital out, which we could do for a very short term. And when we did that, we did that with the intention of going back and making up that money that we cut out of there. And in essence, we'd be following through on that intent. So, any other questions for Kathy?
So just, uh, for, um, scheduling, so our next meeting is our council meeting where I will be presenting the operating budget. And that will be on the Tuesday night. Um, you guys will get your budget books the Thursday before that, so that will be your, your books. And then Thursday, we'll have the public hearing on the budget where both, uh, the superintendent and I will give our public hearing. The public will have a chance to ask, ask questions at that time. The council does not ask questions at that time. And then we'd have the regular council meeting for Tuesday night. We'd come back again the next day, Wednesday. The school system will be back and we'll probably have, um, some of my departments come in on Wednesday night also. So we'll have, uh, my department, same sort of setup as we just did. And then Thursday, we'll finish up, uh, with my departments. We'll hopefully be able to hit the revenues and, um, the grants and we'll look at that. And then, uh, typically we have been, uh, ending on Saturday morning. And so I think we'll, we'll definitely aim for that. And, uh, we're just finishing up the budget this week. And like I said, you'll be getting it the following week.
I noticed you said typically Saturday morning. As I recall, sometimes it goes well into the afternoon.
I'm letting the, letting the expectations.
Yes, yes, I understand. Holding that lunch over our head on Saturday.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions?
No chairs either.
Yeah, all right. Okay, uh, seeing none, I think, uh, we will take no action on this item today. We generally go through the rest of the budget as Kathy was just saying, and then we come back to the cap and when we decide where we are in the budget as a whole. And, uh, also we can have the conversation on the ARPA funding and make our, uh, decisions later on on what we're going to do at the cap. That being said, we would move on to item F, no executive session. Before I ask for an adjournment, I'll give you your quote for the night, that's JP Morgan. The first step towards getting somewhere is deciding not to stay where you are. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, I make a motion to adjourn the 2-22-2022 meeting. Second.
We have a motion in a second. I'm not going to ask for comments because Brian will come up with something on 222. So all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:13. Thank you, everyone.
All right.